Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, February 22, as has been the case for some months and likely for some time to come, we are meeting remotely via Zoom. You can pick up the links for our Village Board Zoom meetings as well as meetings of our other boards and commissioners at our website pleasantville-ny.gov. And we encourage you to log in if you are interested. In addition to that, the recordings of both our work sessions and our village sessions are available within a few days at pctv76.org. So I have a, we have a relatively short list of resolutions, but I have a few updates to make. I'm going to share my screen. So I've showed you this before. I show this to you again. This is the county website at westchestergov.com. And two things pop up, three things pop up right at the top. The COVID dashboard, rescheduled vaccinations update, which was having to do with the snow rescheduling. But then in this yellow section, New York State vaccine eligibility, scheduling and statistics. So I encourage anybody who is following the progress or lack thereof in COVID in our county and certainly folks who are interested in getting an appointment for the vaccine to follow this page, westchestergov.com, click into this yellow section and read about the categories of folks who are currently entitled to get the vaccine and the various ways in which you could get it. As I mentioned the last time, Sal DeLeo, the pharmacist at Pleasantville Pharmacy, is on the list as a potential future site to deliver vaccines and is giving some thought to the logistics of doing that. But as of the moment, he doesn't know when he would be given vaccine to start that program nor how much he might get. So to any rate, we'll report as we can, but westchestergov.com is the starting point right on the homepage for these things. So I'm going to click to the dashboard, which I encourage folks to do. Here's our report. Active cases by municipality down in the left column, Pleasantville is down to 29. So that's a very, very happy report since a couple of weeks ago where you were in the eighties. When a new case is identified within the village, it remains treated as active for two weeks and then it drops off the list. So that number has dropped significantly and that's good news. When you click down here to new cases, not such a great piece of good news, that over the weekend, we had six new positives. So better than it was, we had a couple of weekends where we were 12 and 14. So I would say overall, it is fair to say that we're seeing some gently positive information here. The last, the last tab you can click into is the cumulative count. Scroll down to Pleasantville and you can see that since the system was established, 559 cases have been identified in Pleasantville. So as you know, Pleasantville's official population is in the realm of 7,200. So when we get up here into the low 700s, which it appears likely we will at some point, that'll be the moment when roughly speaking, 10% of the population has tested positive. So generally, some positive reports here, as you can see in this corner. Total tested positive since the county started testing, 5.2%. A number of vaccinations done in Westchester County so far, 9,700. Positive results, you can click in and out of that and you can follow, if you care to do so, the new positive cases per day. But as you can see here, we were way better in the summer and then things got much worse, although they're starting to trend back, back down as we're into 2021. So I think the takeaway from all of that is some cautiously good news, but the six new cases we had over the weekend make clear that we cannot let our guard down. We have a great opportunity here to consider to continue this positive trend as hopefully in the coming months, more and more people can get the vaccine. So if we can keep this positive trend going, kids are going to be back to school, people are going to be back to work, businesses are going to be up and running, people will be eating in restaurants, the burns can reopen. We would very much like to see the world start edging back to normal. So we released a week or two ago, a new edition of Pleasantville Posts. I'll share my screen again. This is our village website at pleasantville-ny.gov. Couple of things to point out. Pleasantville Posts right here, you can click into that and take a look at the newest edition of Pleasantville Posts. If you are a, a member of our email list, which I very, very much encourage you to do, you will get on a monthly basis, a Pleasantville update, thanks to David Vingamori, working with Eric Morrissey and Noreen Regan. If you are not on that list, all you have to do is go to News and Announcements and sign up for Subscribe to News. You can also subscribe to specific categories of things, but you certainly want to subscribe to Village and Local News. If you want to get agendas, you can do it. So I have to say, I've said this a whole lot of times and not a week goes by with someone saying, well, hold it, I didn't see that, I don't get that, how do I get that? So please, 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 we know there's some private listservs out there, we know there are a bunch of Facebook pages, there's some cross listing as there should be, but you can get it right from us by signing up for, for News and Announcements. And I encourage you to do that. So again, as I have reported in the past, down here in Quick Links, the first one is Police Reform. We've been well along in this process that was established by Governor Cuomo, a requirement for every community in New York State that has a police force to go through a review of its police policies and systems and to come forward by April 1 with a set of recommendations. So on the left-hand page tab here, you can click into the various sessions we have so far held. Just last week, led by trustee Paul Alvarez, we did a session in Spanish and that will get added there here too. But where it stands right now is that we're working on a draft set of recommendations and we have a tentative schedule for a meeting this coming Thursday, which is available on Zoom to discuss draft recommendations and start to get people's feedback. If, if in the end, we feel like we have more work to do before we do that, we, there's a chance we might postpone that, but just for the moment, make the assumption that if you are interested in following that, it's available to you live on Thursday and then shortly thereafter, you can pick up with it in a recorded version. So bunch of other things to report here. As we reported, and I think it's been reported in the examiner as well as in our communications, it is our intention to open the pool and to run summer camp on the schedule we normally would. Inevitably, both of those two activities are going to be affected by whatever guidelines the state and the county health department give us about capacity controls and how we have to run it. But we are at the moment believing that we'll be able to do that and both run a pool season and at least at some level, a day camp season. The day camp is likely to be different from what it normally is without the bus food trips and all of that sort of stuff. But if you're interested in any of those subjects, keep an eye on our website and make sure you have signed up for Recreation News and talk to your rec department, to our rec department, Matt Trainer, Mike Newman. And they, they will be able to give you a sense for how that's evolving. As you know, the fall sports, many of them got pushed off into early spring and spring. And so I know that we're working now with both our rec folks as well as the school district about field use in the, in the spring. Plans starting to take shape, but still incomplete, but lots going on coming in the spring and again, an opportunity for you to find out about it by signing up for those emails. We're about to go live. Nicole, you'll confirm for me with a, a survey monkey regarding leaf blowers?
Yes, that's correct. I was just going to tack on to your earlier mention of news and announcements. The village also has a Facebook page and if you're happier getting your news that way, all of the same information that goes out through our email feed also goes there. And that's one of the places, in addition to our email feed, where we will send you a link to a survey on leaf blowers that will be a follow-up to the emails that we've received in a public discussion that we had in the fall. Now that we've kind of, now that we've gotten quite a bit of feedback from the community there, a number of possibilities that have been suggested, so a survey seemed like a good way to get some additional feedback.
And just to be clear, that survey asks for your name and whether you live in Pleasantville?
Yeah, so we're asking specifically for people who live in the village and not people who don't live in the village to, to respond to.
Because they would obviously not be affected by any guidelines that might be established here. We do obviously recognize that there are folks who don't live in the village for whom this would be an impact, especially people who run or work for landscape firms. And we have invited their feedback and received quite a bit of it and doubtless will continue to do so. But our, at the moment, the survey is aimed at Pleasantville residents. Just wanted to remind folks that the library also has an email list. And even though the library remains closed, they have lots of digital services. They have full curbside service, they're offering book bundles, binge bags, recommendations, virtual browsing, hold for pickups and a bunch of different virtual programs. So I encourage you to take a look at, at Mount Pleasant Library.org. In these pandemic times, the library is still full of services that, that can benefit you. So then just as a, as a, just a reminder of dates, as I already mentioned, we have a proposed session on police reform this Thursday at 7:30. Again, a chance, we might delay that if the board feels like we have more work to do before we're ready to, to, to do that. I wanted to let people know that the county is organizing a COVID commemoration at the one-year point through this pandemic and that is going to be held on Wednesday, March 3. It begins at 11:00 AM with an interfaith prayer service at noon. They are requesting a county-wide moment of silence and I think are encouraging churches to ring their bells. And at 7:00 PM that day, Wednesday, March 3, a county-wide applause for healthcare workers. So that is Wednesday, March 3. You can view that event live at facebook.com/westchestergov. So Wednesday, March 3, starting at 11:00 AM, the Westchester COVID commemoration, one year of this grim story for all of us, a chance to come together. Again, facebook.com/westchestergov. We have a village election on Tuesday, March 16, that date set by the state. The ballot, as put together by the County Board of Elections, has been finalized and it is an unopposed election. I am running to be reelected as mayor. David Vingamori, running to be reelected as trustee. And Michael Pepperd, Pleasantville resident, is running to occupy the seat vacated by the retiring Joe Stargiotti. Joe will get a send-off, even though he said he doesn't need one, when his term ends after years of service at the beginning of April. So I remind everybody that the election is run by the County Board of Elections. You will receive a postcard in the mail indicating your polling place because they set up several of them. That's Tuesday, March 16. And despite the fact that the ballot is unopposed, one can make no assumptions. And I encourage everybody to vote. Anybody else have announcements, comments? All right, one last pitch for the farm market, which continues to operate in Memorial Plaza in the winter on Saturday mornings, a shortened schedule and depending heavily on pre-orders. They have set up a system where you can preorder the things you want from various vendors and pay online and then simply come and pick them up from the various vendors quickly and easily without difficulty. It's, it's working pretty well. I encourage folks who haven't yet tried it to try it. That system also exists in, outside the winter, but, but some of the vendors are almost entirely dependent on it for the winter because of the need to plan in these freezing conditions where we don't have an indoor environment. So kudos to the farm market for the good work they're doing. And then my last comment is kudos to a tired bunch of people in our Department of Public Works. Somehow or another, every time we turn around, it keeps snowing. And those folks have been really, really, really stretched to keep our roads clear, but I think are doing, as they so often do, an impressive job. So really difficult venture with the snow landing as it does and with relatively few places to put it. But just want to give a shout out to Jeff Econom and Mike Ferguson, the foreman, and all the folks at DPW for yeoman service. It, it appears that we're getting paid back for all the snow we didn't have last year.
Yeah, here, here, they're doing a great job.
All right. Anybody else? Is there any comment or question from a member of the public? If so, Larry, welcome, sir. Larry Fasnak. You need to unmute yourself. You have done it.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I know who you are and I know where you live, but for the record, we need to tell the world who you are and where you live.
Larry Fasnak, 98 Sarls Lane, in Pleasantville. I just wanted to echo about the Public Works doing a good job. They, they always do and they've shown this year. So thank you.
Thank you for saying that, Larry, and thank you for your longstanding role as a Pleasantville volunteer fireman. So we're keeping those roads clear.
Appreciate it.
So that you can respond. All right, any other comments from anybody before we move to our resolutions? All right. We get back to the resolutions and I will share my screen. All right, Paul, number 27.
Result of the Board of, my own, sorry. One second. Okay, can you hear me? Sorry. Okay. Result of the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the extended proposal for an additional fee of $2,000 with BFJ planning for the floor area ratio, FAR, regulations for single-family residential zones in the village, originally approved via BOT resolution 220-133 for a fee of $15,000. Attachments to this are found right on the link.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so let me just open that attachment here. You probably can't see that because I didn't share that page. I will share it. All right. So Eric Noreen, Robert Hughes and I had a conversation with Susan Favate, principal of BFJ, a, I guess the week before last, talking about their progress and next steps. And in the course of that, raised a couple of other issues. And specifically, those are shown here in this first paragraph. Revised definitions related to site grading and building height and the exclusion of basements and habitable space. So the, the issue there was that the FAR discussion obviously depends on a clear description of what gets included in the FAR calculation. And in addition to that, Robert pointed out of the problem that has arisen occasionally where maximum height of a building can be manipulated by manipulating the grade. And so it may be that what Susan and her colleagues at BFJ will come back with on that subject is the recommendation that the building height be, be calculated based on the existing grade, that is not calculated based on a proposed re-grading. So that obviously will come before us and Susan included in this fee is, would come back and explain those recommendations. But Robert felt strongly that those would be good opportunities to clarify what's meant by the code, reduce circumstances where somebody finds a loophole, but also maximize the clarity of it for potential builders and developers to understand what they're allowed to do. So as a result, we have before us this $2,000 additional fee. The original contract was for 15, it would now be for 70. Comments or questions? All in favor? I.
I abstain.
Okay. So the resolution passes with four votes and one abstention. Nicole, number 28.
Going to share the screen or should I go to mine?
Oh, sorry, I forgot I had left, left that. Here I go. Okay.
All right. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the service and repair proposal with Dalkin Applied Americas Inc. for Village Hall HVAC analysis for a fee of $6,710.
Is there a second?
Second.
You want to fill us in on this one, Robert? I mean, Eric?
Sure. So this goes to our long-running saga of issues at Village Hall this year, but we have two Dakin compressor units, rather large, behind Village Hall. One services the third floor, which we've had a couple of issues with having to get control boards replaced, most recently around the new year. And then the other compressor services the first floor, parts of the PD and the building department. That compressor unit has been acting up. The police department and building department lose heat quite frequently, which means that we make a call to technician, local HVAC technician, who comes in, thinks that they've remediated the issue, but really hasn't. You know, it's one, one time after another, they just can't fix the problem. What they end up doing is they get on the phone with technicians at Dakin to try to troubleshoot. So we're paying for a technician to talk to a Dakin technician to try to troubleshoot this issue. We've kind of reached our threshold of frustration. We reached out to Barrell Associates with that frustration, who actually put us in touch with Dakin directly, who offers these analysis and actually servicing contracts as well. So we are taking the tack now that we will go to Dakin directly. We've talked to representatives who say typically when we have units that are this age, we shouldn't be running into the issues we're running into.
That is, they're young enough that they should be fine.
And typically, more times than not, it ends up being an installation issue, something going wrong with the installation. So this analysis will look at the health of the compressing, compressor units as well as the electrical that runs throughout the building. So you know, at this point, we are paying technicians to come troubleshoot these issues when we run into them. This is more of a proactive approach where we'll know exactly what's been causing the issues. So it is.
Dakin is the, is the, is the manufacturer of the equipment?
That's correct.
Right. Okay. Any comments, questions? All right, all in favor? I motion approved. 29, Joe.
Whereas Village Law Section 7-724 authorizes the Board of Trustees to establish an official map of the village. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees wishes to adopt the 1964 zoning map of the Village of Pleasantville, last revised October 8, 2007, as the official map of the Village of Pleasantville, as amended from time to time, together with additions to such map resulting from the approval of subdivision final plats and the recording thereof in the county office of land records. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, determines the proposed action to be a type-two action requiring no additional review under SECR, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts as the official map of the Village of Pleasantville, the 1964 zoning map of the Village of Pleasantville, last revised October 8, 2007, together with the additions to such map resulting from the approval of subdivision, subdivision final plats and the recording thereof in the county, county office of land records as the official map of the Village of Pleasantville and which shall be kept on file in the village clerk's office. And be it further resolved that the village administrator is hereby authorized and directed to immediately file a certificate of the establishment of such official map with the clerk of the county of Westchester as required by Section 7-724 of the Village Law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can you read that again? Just if I missed it.
I think we should set it to music. Eric, we're, we're filling a, putting a peg in a hole that hadn't been done?
That's right. So the village code actually refers to a official map quite frequently. We've run into this situation when we look at our refuse districts, but we have found no record that the village actually adopted an official map. So it is relatively easy process. We're empowered to do so via resolution.
Are you saying there's no official map from 1964?
Yeah, so the official, never officially designated an official map according to minutes that we've looked through. So we.
If we did, but didn't find it, no harm in doing it again?
No, no, no harm in doing it again, but you just, you know.
We have, we typically use two maps here in the village. One is the zoning map and the other being the tax map that's actually housed with town clerk. Talking to village attorney, it's most appropriate to use the map that we maintain here in the village being the zoning.
Will this be available online?
Yes, it is right now. Yeah, under the building department.
And reference made to this official map in a resolution to come here.
That's right.
Okay. All right, any comments or questions? All in favor?
I.
I motion approved. David?
Everyone asked for.
I knew this is coming, right? So where's the Village Board of Trustees desires to amend the official map of the Village of Pleasantville pursuant to New York State Village Law Section 6614 and 7724 to remove, abandon and discontinue the portion of Congress Street located within the boundaries of the Village of Pleasantville between Sarls Lane and Mountain Road located between tax lots known as Section 106.5 Block 1, Slot 4 and 5 and shown in the official map of the Village of Pleasantville, but was never developed or used in a public way. And whereas Congress Street was originally shown and designated on a map entitled Map of Section 2, Section Number 2 of Pleasantville Heights, Town of Mount Pleasant, made by John M Farley, filed in the Westchester County Clerk's Office on July, June 19, 1906, as filed map number 1633. And whereas the village records confirm the village has not heretofore accepted dedication of the portion of Congress Street located within the boundaries of the Village of Pleasantville between Sarls Lane and Mountain Road. And whereas the village received a request from Larry Fasnak, property owner of 98 Sarls Lane, Tax Slot 106.5-1-4, and John Tobin Jr., owner of 108 Sarls Lane, Tax Slot 106.5.1, 106.5-1-5. to abandon the portion of Congress Street located in between their premises and whereas the de-mapping and discontinuance of the undeveloped portions of Congress Street is an unlisted action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, now therefore be resolved, the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby refers to proposed amendment of the official map of the Planning Commission of the Village of Pleasantville for its report and recommendations. Be further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby schedules a public hearing on the proposed amendment of the official map for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. It further resolved that the village clerk is hereby directed to distribute the notice of public hearing to the town clerk of the town of Mount Pleasant pursuant to Section two seventy-seven point seven one of the Westchester County Administrative Code, no later than ten days prior to the public hearing. Be it further resolved that the village clerk is hereby directed to arrange for publication of public notice in a newspaper of general circulation in the village, no later than ten days prior to the date of the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're going to drive Michael Pepperd away from us with this kind of thrilling material. All right. Eric, you want to just report on the discussions with Susan and Larry and their neighbors?
Sure. So this is what's informally referred to as a paper road. A section of Congress Streets about a hundred feet that runs from the intersection of Sarls Lane. It it is de facto like an extension of their driveways. There's a title report that shows they have claimed to the ownership. There is some called leverage that the village has to obtain ownership, but that is what we still desire. However, it is a piece of roadway we've never maintained. We've never plowed. We've never repaved. It really has no extensive value to the village. So the village engineer superintendent of public works is okay with abandoning this this section of the roadway. It's something that that we've all discussed that as as a board and administration. So.
All right. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. I thought Larry would applaud or something. Nothing. All right. Thank you, Larry. Number thirty-one, back to Paul.
Whereas the state legislature and the governor enacted legislation that establishes a property tax cap on the amount that a local government's property tax levy can increase each year. And whereas under this law, the total amount to be raised through property taxes charged on the municipalities taxable ass assess assessed value of property will be capped at two percent. Or the rate of inflation, whichever is less, with some exceptions. And whereas state legislation provides for local governments to override the cap to protect the unforeseen financial circumstances. And whereas state legislation requires that in the event that an override is necessary, the law enabling it must already have been adopted by the Board of Trustees prior to the adoption of the fiscal year budget. Now, therefore be a resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one at eight P M. to be held via teleconference to hear comments on introductory law one of twenty twenty-one overriding the property tax cap for the village fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
So ju-just to be clear, it is not necessarily our intention to override the tax cap. And we may not need to. But it's our policy annually to put in place the mechanism to to do that. If in the course of our budget review, which is ongoing right now, we decide to need to to do it. So again, just to be clear, it is not our intention at the moment to override the task cap. It is not out of the question. This is just setting in place the procedural requirements that give us the option if we found it necessary.
Mister Mister Mayor, could I just ask a question?
Yes.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, the whereas under this law, the total amount to be raised for the property taxes charged on the municipality's tax taxable assessed value of property will be capped at two percent for the rate of inflation, whichever is left with some extensions, with some exceptions. At some point, and I'm not going to make a big deal about it tonight, obviously, but at some point it'd be nice to rewrite that just because it's they're almost all exceptions. It's almost never two percent. Two percent is just one of the numbers in an eight step formula. Or or the rate of inflation, whichever is less.
So would you be happier if it said with many exceptions instead of with some?
Absolutely. I mean, because it's, I mean, I think we're doing the governor a favor, you know, an advertising favor is constantly calling it two percent cent tax gap. And it's been that less than half the time, and you're just as likely to have a four percent increase. You know, work and and work under the cap based on a formula, then you are a zero percent.
I mean, the whole thing is is a labyrinthine and difficult. Perhaps we should say with various exceptions.
With multiple.
How about various? Are the mover and the seconder in agreement with revising that paragraph to read with various exceptions?
Hi.
Who was this? Who was the seconder?
I was the seconder.
Was the mover there? That was all. All. All right. All right.
Thank you for. Can we can we take out there's under the phrase March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one at eight thousand P M. Just take out two zeros. That's all.
It's really, it's 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 a very special hearing. So.
COVID is.
All right. All in favor of the resolution as amended?
Hi.
I motion approved. Nicole, you get the short one.
Feels anticlimactic after all that.
Yeah.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
And they are attached.
Attached.
Comments or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. Joe, number thirty-three.
Did somebody second that one?
I seconded it.
Oh, sorry.
And here's your chance to first, number thirty-three.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following standard work day and reporting of records of the activities of New York State Employee Retirement System for the following elected, appointed, I'm sorry, elected and appointed officials with current terms commencing in September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty. So let's see, we have Washington P. Alvarez with a particular NYSL RS number trustee. Current term nine twenty-nine twenty through four thirty twenty-three.
Or three twenty-three.
Four, three, twenty-three. Standard workday six. Record of activity results in two point oh one. Submitted yes. Pay frequency is biweekly and tier one, no. And for Virginia Collins, NYSL RS number given associate village justice, her her term runs from nine twenty-nine twenty through four, five, twenty-one, standard workday six. Record record of activity results, two point one nine. Submitted yes, biweekly on pay frequency and tier one is no. And George Pappas, again, NYSL RS number, the village prosecutor. His term runs nine twenty-nine twenty through four, five, twenty-one, standard workday six. Record of activity results, one submitted yes, pay frequency biweekly and tier one, no.
Is there a second?
Again.
Comments or questions? All in favor? I motion approved. David, thirty-four.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-one as listed below. Seven hundred and eighty-one dollars from account a one nineteen ninety dot four hundred contingent to a sixteen eighty-one dot forty-eight central technology software. Fifteen hundred dollars from F nineteen ninety dot four hundred contingent to F sixteen eighty-one dot forty-five central technology consulting service. Eight thousand and then for increase in revenues and expense from the general fund, the amount of eight thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars from insurance, a zero two one dash two six eight oh insurance recovery property damage to a three one two oh dot four two five police outside service repair fiber water transmission overtime and twenty-one hundred and forty-four dollars from a zero three zero dot three oh two one slash JCP twenty-one state aid court PPE and office equipment to a one ten dot two ten slash JCP twenty-one state aid court PPP and office equipment for a total of ten thousand three hundred and ninety dollars even.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we had an insurance recovery here. That's good. So you're you're muted, Eric.
That, sorry about that. That stems from the the accident on the train tracks a few months back, went through the fence that carries the wire for the police camera in Memorial Plaza.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All in favor? I motion approved. Back to Paul, thirty-five.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one for the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-one, covering check numbers nine nine five four seven dash nine nine six four six, general fund, two hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven and ninety cents. Water fund, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three and fourteen cents. Refuge fund, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine and forty-nine cents. Trust fund, six hundred and twenty-nine. In total, for three hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and nine and fifty-three cents.
Is there a second?
There's a claim attached.
And as always, you can click into this in in our novice agenda that you can get through through us, village NY.gov. Click into any of these blue links and it will bring you into the backup and you can see literally every line of these expenses.
I don't think we had a second. I second if if nobody did.
All right. Comments or questions on the check register? All in favor? I motion approved. Nicole, number thirty-six.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Mount Pleasant Public Library to appropriate twenty-two thousand dollars from library reserve funds for the capital project to install a needlepoint bipolar ionization system on the HVAC system at the main library location. Three fifty Bedford Road, Pleasantville, and the the proposal is attached.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
So this is in essence, a a COVID response to install a a an ionization scrubber, so to speak, that would assist in maintaining air quality.
Yeah, it's it's a technology that's similar to a UV light.
I I understand that's technology, but I find the name amusing. Needlepoint bipolar ionization. Unusual. It's really unusual.
It's a collision of factors.
Yes.
All right. We'll just call it NBI. That'll be. All right. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approve. And that was the last of our regular agenda items. Is there any further comment from a visitor or member of the public? I see none. Let me just offer a brief report before we close and go back into work session. The New York Conference of Mayors at this time of year normally has a legislative program on a Sunday and a Monday convened in Albany. And then on Tuesday, the participants fan out to the Capitol and meet with their various representatives in the Senate and the Assembly. I have gone on that venture many, many times and both on behalf of Pleasantville and I'm the Legislative Chair for the Westchester Municipal Officials Association. So we had this event via Zoom with NICOM to talk about various subjects and and they had speakers on on multiple subjects. And then the Westchester Municipal Officials Association convened a Zoom meeting with the 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 WAMOA Executive Committee with the entire Westchester delegation, all the Senate and Assembly offices in Westchester. And we presented a bunch of priority issues that were important to us. One of them affects a matter we talked about a little bit earlier, and that is the two percent tax cap. I'm not even remotely optimistic that this matter will achieve any traction. But we asked this year, as we have every year, that capital costs, for example, the cost of replacing and upgrading water mains or sewer mains be excluded from the tax cap calculation as it is for school districts and as it is for the state itself. Cities, towns and villages are are alone in this where a capital cost is included in the tax cap, which in my opinion, but I think in the opinion of many of my colleagues around Westchester, is a transparently stupid piece of public policy, which is to say Albany has established the tax cap and whatever you think about that, they have essentially created a circumstance where there is a political hit attached to spending our own money to repair and renew our infrastructure for the future. So I am happy to report that Pleasantville, long before any of us got involved, has a has a really solid history of keeping up with its infrastructure. But that doesn't mean we don't confront big expenses going down the road. And I can also report that I think we've been pretty successful at continuing that progress without breaking the tax cap. But that isn't true for everybody, and it won't always be true for us. And it it seems utterly ridiculous for the state to create a circumstance where a community that believes it ought to invest in its infrastructure and is willing to spend the money to do it has been given a political disincentive to do so because it would require breaking the tax cap. So we made that pitch. I think, you know, there's some sympathetic ears among our Westchester delegation in the Senate and the Assembly. But it is, I think, pretty clear on both sides of the aisle in Albany that nobody's going to tinker with that this year either. So that's one of a whole bunch of subjects that I pitch out there just for people's education. And I think it's important for folks to realize that, as Shane already alluded, what sounds like a rather simple, simple calculation is anything but. But in my opinion, this issue about capital costs ought to be addressed, and it's a source of substantial frustration that nobody will do it. So that's my soapbox. All right. Any other new business? All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn and return to work session?
Done, moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion to go into executive session on matters of personnel.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, here we go. Call in. Thank you all.
Good night.